Not that bad.
It looks like a job for an engineer.
Hold up. Oh, it's still on.
We got a broken one now? Good thing we put that phlegm in there.
Hi, Derek?
There you go.
I'm going to plug in the heck out of him.
Daryl.
I think so, yeah. Jim Bartholomew is here, gonna come and give a report on the Junkar case. There was a hearing today, all day, amazing building.
I think we should scratch a line in the window on it.
And it didn't work. They adjourned it to 13.
I hate to finish it up.
And to, uh...
He's like in his questioning.
Richard, so they...
So he can finish it up.
How the hell did they waste the whole day and they didn't get to him?
You know, it was an, it was a horrible sight.
I betcha. I can't imagine it wouldn't have been.
If you've read any of Kingstead's stuff, it's like that, only worse, when he's questioning witnesses. I mean, even Judge Needham was going like this once as well. You could just tell he was getting sick of it.
Well, good, maybe then he won't let him repeal it.
Well, that's not up to Needham.
Um, so it would be appealed to a different court?
Do you know how you manage like this? Do you know how you manage like this?
Chief!
He's probably worn out.
Can you give me a key? Leaks out.
Just making sure the 712 buying guy's not coming.
Jim Luffler coming back?
No, it's a different guy.
No, it's not.
That's the same guy?
Yeah.
It is? What's he mad for?
What'd you say, what's he mad for?
Following through.
It's already been approved, Ed.
We're bringing his better pictures this time.
I want to see a video. I want to see, I want to see a video of the fan. Like looking at vacation pictures.
Some of us have to live through other people's vacations, you know what I mean?
Oh, nothing. I got one rule: do not show me a picture of anything.
That's your one rule? Don't show me a picture of anything. You know, one rule is why you should see what people... One rule. Every rule is not treat others as you would like to be treated. It's don't show me a picture of anything.
Kill the sword on the ground.
Stop. I got one. I better turn this over.
God, I wish I still drank. I want to go drinking with him. Yeah, I never did.
Holy cow!
What's up?
The honorable. The judge.
You want to have it? It's fine. Roll call. Roll call.
So it doesn't look like we have a shot again on here any of the time.
Why am I still sitting here? I should be sitting at the end now.
No, 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 no.
It doesn't matter.
I'm not a big time...
Oh, no, 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 no.
Is she, you're in the plank challenge?
Make those motions fast. Keep them rolling.
Your wife is.
Okay, push. Think we got it. Get all the players, eh? Yeah.
If that's the right year.
And I'd like to move to approve the regular board meeting.
I'm trying to get the players to sit in the microphone on and we'll get started, I promise.
No video today, huh?
It's not live. It'll be on in the morning. Okay, it is Tuesday, 3 June 2014 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call a regular board of trustees meeting to order. And as we have custom, we'll start with an invocation. "Lord, you have asked us to call to you with the promise that you will answer when we do. We humbly seek your guidance for our nation. Give us the wisdom so that we will be a people guided by your spirit and filled with your presence. Help us, O Lord, to honor you in word and deed, that we, as a people, will have your blessing and favor." Uh, roll call.
Present.
Here.
O'Brien Merglin.
Here.
Rhodey.
Here.
Sanifer.
I am present.
President Mecklen.
Here.
Trustee Zach.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And item number two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting.
Stan, I'd like to approve the, or move to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of May 6, 2014.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second? Thank you, Colleen. Uh, is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Who carries? Okay, item number three, comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. We had a little glitch that we were understood that we, the comments from the, from the citizens can be either on the today's agenda or not. So, that's new wording. Uh, any comments? No, that's Nick down list. Item number four, 2014-2015, Class A/B alcohol beverage licenses, cigarette licenses, and amusement permits. Approval requested. Is there a motion?
Move to approve Class A Fermented Malt Beverage License for Freedom Value Centers, Inc., Paul Kirk Agent, with an effective date July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
I'll second. Thank you, Colleen. Thank you. Uh, any further comments or discussion?
I'd just point out that on all of these, the chief has reviewed them and given his recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, any further, uh, assistance for permits? We'll do a roll call. Start with Paul.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, approved. Uh, number five, 2014-2015 fireworks permit application.
There's quite a few right here.
Oh, we got...
You got them.
Oh, Christ.
One, two, three, four.
Where's that pin? Oh, there it is. Oh, I thought we were blank. I thought that was a blanket shot.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class A Fermented Malt Beverage License for Freedom Value Centers, Paul Kirk Agent, with an effective date of...
You just did that one.
You just did that one.
We skipped over the first one.
We skipped the first one. You did Freedom Value Center.
Right.
Oh. Oh.
Freedom Value Center.
Yeah. Blanket hold in.
All right. All right, so we gotta go... Which we got, so we got, which one done? No, the second one?
Second one is done.
Second one is done.
Okay. Okay. So you want to make that motion, Ted, since you were on the roll?
Sure. I will motion to approve the Class A Fermented Malt Beverages and Class A Intoxicating Liquor License for Village Liquor Store Kimberly White Agent, with an effective date of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Ted.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Roderick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, now we go down to number three in the center. New rules of Class B, Class B.
These are bar licenses.
Right.
I'll move to approve the Class B Fermented Malt Beverages and Class B Intoxicating Liquor License with an effective date of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, for LDJT, Inc., DBA The Village Inn, Lee Halverson Agent, Malloo, Inc., DBA Malloo Inn, Peggy Multer Agent, Stars Bar, Inc., DBA Stars Bar, William Souter Agent, Xander, Inc., DBA Cozy Corner, Scott Nelson Agent, Lambden, Inc., DBA Ma Maria's Restaurante, Anna Marie Burr Agent, Seasons Tavern, BDC LLC, DBA Seasons Tavern, Brad Rebers Agent, and Zappa, and Zappa, DBA Muds and Suds, Mark Zappa Agent, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Darrell. Further discussion? Uh, Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. Okay, tobacco sales license over the counter.
I'd like to move to approve the over-the-counter tobacco sales licenses for The Village Inn, Malloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Liquor Store, and the Freedom Value Center, with an effective date of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, as recommended by the village clerk.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, discussion? Roderick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 And the last one, coin-operated amusement license.
Mr. President, I would like to move to approve the coin-operated amusement license for Malloo Inn, Stars Bar, The Village Inn, Seasons Tavern, Muds and Suds, and Cozy Corner, with an effective date of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, as recommended by the village clerk.
And you, Ted, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Darrell. Further discussion? Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Still in, Mark?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, uh, let's see. Next is fireworks permit, 2014-2015, application of Mark Zappa of Exit 1 Fireworks. Approval requested. Is there a, want to make a motion for that, please?
Move to approve the application for the fireworks perennalia sale permit. For Mark Zappa, subject to approval from the appropriate Hudson Ferry Department representatives, and with the following inclusions: No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to person or persons under 18 years of age, permit likely to be July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Further discussion?
The chief has observed these premises, and they're in full compliance with all requirements.
You're happy now?
I'm happy.
Okay, life is good. Uh, Roderick?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll abstain.
Mark, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
You, okay. I abstained. All right, number six, amended, Class B, Class B liquor license for extended premises, Cozy Corner Relay for Life fundraiser on 4 June 2014. Approval requested.
Stan, can I move the extended premises request for Cozy Corner with the following conditions? One, area outside a building to be completely enclosed with fence, and the extended premises accessed only from within the building. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within building or fence and area per the establishment's liquor license. Three, use of outside area only with specific permission of village board for requested date and times. Four, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot is fenced during the time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume. And six, all outside music to end no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Uh, any further discussion?
I don't think the drawing's quite the scale.
Nice.
Uh, I'll talk to Mr. Nelson if I thought that...
They don't need that much detail in the future.
I mean, we should have one of those permanently in the file, I would think.
This looks kind of like Cedar Corp's work.
He said that.
Yeah, okay, so...
I'm still trying to get that leather satchel he promised me 10 years ago.
She doesn't forget.
Just for the record.
For the record.
For the record. Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see.
That satchel.
Item number seven, Resolution 2014-05, Department of Natural Resources Review, Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, CMR. Approval requested. And the resolution states, resolved that the Village of North Hudson informs the Department of Natural Resources that the following actions were taken by the Village of North Hudson Board of Trustees, whereas the Village Board of Trustees has reviewed the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, which is attached to the resolution.
Is that a motion?
This is an annual thing, and I will make it as a motion.
I couldn't be happier to second that one, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, is there further discussion?
I don't want to be...
In the interest of saving paper?
In the wilderness here, but I don't see the annual report.
We've never attached it.
It's accurate and interesting.
If you would like to, us to bring it in, um, do you want to have them review it?
No, I don't think I do, but we're saying that I have reviewed it, and I'm hesitant to vote on something.
I'll go get it, and then you guys can maybe move that to the last, because it has to go...
Terry, I'm not trying to be a hard ass here, but I mean...
No, you're right.
Are we okay to say we've reviewed it?
No. Not if you haven't. I mean, not if you have done no review of it whatsoever, which...
Well, I mean, the administrator, Public Works, Mark...
I have every confidence it's fine. I have no problem with it, but I haven't reviewed it.
No, that's CYA.
I agree, yeah.
That could be another argument for getting our tablets or laptops, you know, so that we can have that stuff available.
That compliance report, yeah.
It's like Obamacare.
So Stan, should we... Should we move on to new business while we're waiting for the...
Uh, well, since Gloria's part of the new business list, we can wait. She should have that back here in a second. I know, thirst wise. Just shoot this, we'll shoot the vote for this back, uh... Prior to a session.
Any objections to rearranging the, well...
Yeah, it's not a very long report.
Like a short read.
I think it's 16, especially.
Yeah. It's all one thing. Can I give the board an update on it? Basically, Mark fills out a section of it. Mark, you want to comment on that side, and then I'll come on the financial side.
This doesn't change much from year to year, correct?
I don't think the word "review" means you have to read it word for word. I think it means you've taken a look at it, you've heard the staff reports, those sorts of things.
Knowledge in its existence typically.
Okay.
Maybe...
When we submit, Mr. President, or to the supervisor, when we submit this to someone, is it reviewed by anyone, or are we going through a process of busy work here, and...
We will, we'll, we'll review it, and then they will send us back a grade on how we did and heard of all the rest.
So you do in fact get a response back, so you know someone reads it.
And if you do not turn that in, they are in contact with you. Basically, it's to protect the water.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is...
Make sure that we're maintaining.
This is for our permit to allow water to...
Correct, get back to it, yeah. So that basically what it is, if us not complying with it, they can take Village's Senator Sewer wastewater permit away.
Right.
And basically, you know, and basically, you know...
We'd be digging out houses, is that... And drilling wells like crazy.
But they, as we submit one for the village, treat the wastewater, treat the plants, and that's for the city, and basically, it's, you know... It's one of those things that, just because we are two separate municipalities, both of us have to submit our own. And basically, since we have our own maintenance things, my, my park maintains the bus stations, we maintain the Senator Sewer. We maintain everything until it goes across the bottom of the water.
They want to make sure we've got funds available to do those maintenance.
Make sure we got proper amount of funds to be able to fix something, something serious that went wrong with the bus station.
You think that new fence will get us a higher grade?
See, I can't report that until 2014, so next year.
Credit for it this year.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can get extra credit?
Get your grade up early, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, so we're reporting.
Yes, we do. Uh, Darrell, we're okay? You, okay? Okay, since it's a resolution, Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Good. Okay, new business from the board or staff? Uh, President's comments first. The only thing I have is that on 14 June, it is Flag Day and the birthday of the United States Army. I'd like to say happy birthday to the United States Army. And on the 15th is Father's Day, and I'd like to say happy Father's Day to all the fathers on the board and all the fathers in the village. That's all I have.
June 8.
Oh, and June 8, if anybody wants to send a birthday card to Paul Rhodey, it is, he will be celebrating a birthday, and it just so happens to be the same date as my oldest son.
And my daughter.
I think he's giving 10% off everything at Agave on that day.
Big party at Agave.
Next topic. If you're getting thrown out there, dude.
Gloria?
Time, nope.
Okay, village clerk, is there anything, Melissa, that you got to report? Okay.
Oh, shoot.
Come on.
You can see Mark is heartbroken. Uh, plan commission recommendations, we don't have...
Mike Meiser called me today. He's the chair of planning commission.
Yep.
He was planning on coming, but he was unable to attend the town.
Okay.
Instead of Kevin, or somebody wanted to give an update.
Just real quickly, what's the...
Oh, thank you.
Probably seen some information back at the subdivision that's going on, the review process, the real preliminary stages, basically at the concept stage. Been through part four, oh, it works, and planning commission, just getting some initial comments, parkland dedication, street whiffs, stormwater management, um...
Plague lots. You can see, there's a bunch of comments that I had put together. Um, you know, that was relayed to the developer. From there, basically, he'll start putting together his preliminary plat and his construction plans. Um, you know, that'll be coming back through Public Works and Plan Commission again for that approval, which will, they'll make recommendations, and then that'll be brought to the village board for a decision. So, that's all the business that we're doing right now in plan commission, so...
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. President?
For Kevin?
Sure.
I was a little surprised that the comment about the flag lot seemed to be a little cavalier. And I know that there are concerns about flag lots, particularly from the standpoint of public safety and EMT and some other things. So just develop that a little bit, because it seemed to be, um, kind of swept under the rug, the comment about the flag lot.
There was a lot of things that were being brought up at the planning mission, and that was one of them. You know, some of the concerns that you had brought up, you know, being able to get fire access back into there. When you look through the whole village, you know, some of the new subdivisions that have been brought in, Derrick's, um, you don't, you don't see those. They're not common. There are a few exceptions out there in other communities. There's nothing in your ordinance that states that you can't have them. Um, but that's definitely something that we're going to be considering when we go through the review process for the plat. So, I think everybody's aware of what those are. You know, they have a real narrow frontage on the street, long driveway, and then the lot sits, sits behind there, so...
What's the length of driveway on that flag lot?
Um...
In 50, 100?
It's probably, yeah, you know, 100, 100 feet back, somewhere in there.
And there's no driveways currently in North Hudson?
Not that I'm aware of.
That are that length?
You know, the issue that you have, you do have some verbiage.
There's a lot at the end of, uh, Michaelson Street goes up the hill, the House, it's like a...
Yep.
Yeah.
The issue you have in your ordinance, it states that you have to have a minimum frontage on the road. You know, with the flag lot, you would not have that. So the question is, do you have to go through the Board of Appeal for, because it would be a variance from your ordinance.
But, but the way they're trying to do this flag lot, they flare out at the street in order to get that frontage. I mean, the difference between just a long driveway and a flag lot is that the flag lot, the property on either side of the driveway is owned by somebody else. It's somebody else's lot, as opposed to just a long driveway where you own the whole lot.
But there is some verbiage in the ordinance that says, at the building setback, it has to be a certain width. And when you, 30 feet, you're not going to have that distance, so...
So this wouldn't comply, then?
No, it wouldn't. No, but that's specifically for cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
So, there's some things that need to be ironed out, I would agree.
One other thing about just the process that we're in right now, this was their, just their concept plan.
Right.
They got a lot of feedback.
Yep.
And they're going to come back with another more solid plan.
Yep. So...
Okay.
Something that'll be coming, you'll be seeing down the road, so...
Any other questions for Kevin? Sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Number 10, Personnel and Finance Committee Recommendations. Claims approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the May 2014 non-recurring claims totaling $17,352.66?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Paul? Is it Paul or Ted? Colleen? Okay, we'll give it to Colleen. Thank you. Uh, any discussion, comments? Any one? Roderick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark? Yes?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, number B is purchase of tablet for village administrator. Approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the purchase of a tablet or notepad for a cost not to exceed $900?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul. Discussion?
I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. It's, yeah, it's, a lot of other municipalities are using them around the area, and...
Mark doesn't have to drive around once a month to give us books eventually, and...
Yeah, I mean, you got, you save on gas, you save about 60,000 copies or something we make down here through the year, Gloria?
Yes.
There are villages that have given each board member, well, it's village property, but each board member has issued a tablet, an iPad, or some... but each board member has issued a tablet, an iPad or something similar, and then from everything, the whole packet comes out on, on the tablet, on PDFs. And the villages that have done that, I think, have found it to be very successful.
And I would, I would take it further and advise that if we did get to that point, that we'd be able to use our own equipment instead of the expense of the village also.
Well, one of the things we run into with, you know, open meeting and, and, you know, having personal or your village stuff on personal computers, if there would ever be an issue, a lawsuit or something similar, they, if it's on your personal equipment, I believe they could, they can ask to see everything on your, you know, they can take that, your personal equipment, and go through everything you got on there.
In this case, though, the, this, the board packet, for the purposes of the board packet, it wouldn't actually be downloaded onto the tablets. You'd just use it to access...
I have, I have...
I think this discussion is germane to what's in front of us.
Yeah, no, this is not on the agenda.
We're talking about tablet for the, for the administrator.
Right, right.
But I was elaborating on being a step in the right direction.
Okay. All right, and that's a purchase, so, Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
And next on the agenda is Public Works.
Public Works did meet, and we have three motions to bring to the Board tonight. The first motion is to rec, to move to isolating the west side of the water main of the East Bank condominiums with a not to exceed 30,000 with future looping to remain an option and to begin the process with the railroad property easement. We did get a quote from Cedar Corp., and the initial estimate is 23,470.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Roderick. Discussion?
And that's the west side of East Bank, just so I can keep my direction straight there.
They've had lots of water freeze-ups down there, and it's a project that we can get done. Let's see, that's spending, so, Roderick?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And next one, Ted, see?
We did meet about the reconnecting of the water sewer services at 850 Kirkwood Way North. And there is a motion to move to pay Zappa Brothers Incorporated the sum of $8,890.55 for reconnecting the services at 850 Kirkwood Way North.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Roderick. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll admit some confusion on this. I have no problem with the request to pay Zappa Brothers the amount that they are due for the work that we asked Zappa Brothers to do. That, that seems pretty straightforward. But I'm confused how we got to that point. And it appears, if I'm following the information, that a contractor did some work that was not in compliance with village code, and we had Zappa then, at village request, come in and correct that work. If that, if, if I'm incorrect, stop me, but if that would be the case, then I'm confused why the original contractor is not responsible for this.
What happened was back in December of 2013, while I was on vacation, the contractor requested to, requested information on how to connect to municipal water and sewer. My staff went up, met with him on site, they located a curb stand for him to connect to, they connected that curb stand, they could not find a, the connection for the sanitary sewer. They found a connection that was actually running parallel to the property, so they tied into that. Basically, when I got back in January and I was informed about this, I met with my staff, I, and basically, and then I met with the contractor, tell him that what they did was actually, they were given poor information by my staff. They were connected at the wrong location. The actual connection for that house, we're not on the east corner of that lot, they're actually on the west corner of that lot.
Okay, so, so, so we were in agreement, the work was incorrectly done?
Correct.
But you're saying it was incorrectly done based on information that was given to them by village personnel, and they followed that instruction?
Correct.
Yeah.
And basically, the largest reason, if this would have been, you know, that curb stand they connected to is actually a bleeder, that's a, on a six, it's actually a six-inch water main stubbed that would have ran, if Derrick's would not have developed their property, there would have been a water main that would have ran up that hillside between 850 Kirkwood Way and Ted's house. That's what that main was supposed to be for. But once Derrick's developed the ridges, those upper lots of, of this contractor's development could then be accessed through there. Water and sewer was stubbed into those two lots from up on top of the hill. So that water main was not used. And with the, with water quality issues and males having a, a house tied to a six-inch, basically a six-inch dead-end main, you're going to always have a poor water quality issue. You're basically going to have stagnant water in that pipe. That house is not going to use enough water to, you know, out of that main to be able to...
Okay, I don't, I don't have any problem with that. But I guess what I'm hearing you say, Mark, is that based on the fact that the original contractor did the work according to code incorrectly, but we're going to hold that contractor harmless because they did the work based on instruction from village staff that was not accurate?
Correct.
And then it was corrected by another contractor to be brought into compliance?
At the request of the first contractor. Actually, Danny Bjornstedt was the excavator who did the connection for the contractor that built the house. Danny Bjornstedt in May requested that I have, had the village have Zappa Brothers do the work because of family issues he was having, he would not be able to get to it before the house, depending closing on the house. And actually, we completed the hookup the day of the closing.
Okay. I'm assuming you have had some conversation with your staff about what transpired here, and this will not happen again in the future?
And this is, this is a very, it's, well, and myself, there's some other issues with that property that we discussed in finance. I will be meeting with the contractors again. Basically, something, most time with a contractor, before they just show up on the site, they'll come in and talk to me and say, hey, we're going to be building this house. Where's the water and sewer connections at? And this contractor did not do that. So...
Mark, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Did the village ask Zappa Brothers to go out and do the work?
Actually, the village at the request of the initial contractor, yes.
But we told Zappa, go ahead and do that work.
Correct.
The corrective work. I don't have any problem with Zappa doing the corrective work. That's enough.
So, so I think...
The thing seems a little convoluted to me.
If, if, if we told Zappa to do the work, we have to pay Zappa.
Right.
But...
No problem.
If we wanted to make a claim against the contractor, that would be a discussion for another night, and it would be a complicated claim and a hard one to make.
I, I don't think I want to pursue anything like that. I just needed to understand the issue better. Because it looks like, from the standpoint of the village, we're paying twice for the work.
Basically, what I, and yes, I did sit my staff down, and we have discussed what, you know, we have ASBILTS for everything downstairs that's been done, well, for most parts, except the older sections of town. But basically, everything since I've been here in 2000, or since I've been here, it'll be 18 years Thursday. But since I've been here, we have ASBILTS on every project that has been done in this village, including all the information needed up there. They did go and get the ASBILT, problem is they pulled the wrong ASBILT.
So, as Chair of Public Works, it's been addressed at the committee meeting, and I've sat down with Mark.
Okay.
In a separate meeting to discuss it.
It's been addressed.
It's been addressed, yes.
Okay, I'm fine.
Anybody else? Okay, that's a payment, so, Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And the last item is the fence installation.
Yes, Mr. President, the owner at 902 Salies LA North is replacing the wood fence on his property. It is requested that the wastewater treatment plant replace the fence around the sanitary sewer lift station next to his property with the same type of fencing. So I do move to have Lowe's replace the fence around the lift station at a cost not to exceed $2,500.
Thank you, Ted.
Mark second.
Mark second, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, the spending again, Roderick?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
It wouldn't make you sit too long, Joe.
I just wanted to make it a square.
You used to make a square. Gerald's a dissenter. Okay, thank you. And that's all from Public Works. Public safety?
We only had one actionable activity, which we addressed in item five. Stan, other than that, nothing else to report?
Okay. Five. Okay. So, there's nothing there. Public welfare committee?
Paul? Chair, we did meet. We have a motion to recommend approval of 2014 animal warden service contract as written. Meeting in December 31st, 2014.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion on the contract?
What's the amount?
Uh, there is a B schedule.
B schedule's on page five.
It's kind of an incident, payment per incident type of situation?
There.
It's on page five.
Okay. Let's see, contract approval, Roderick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. And, Park Board, Colleen?
We did meet, have a few things. As you may have noticed, we had installed mutt mitts in the parks a few years ago that has been getting more expensive. And then now the, to replace the bags, it's, it costs $600 a year, and the bags are often being used for playing with my kids with sandbags or who knows what. So, the Park Board is recommending to use up the current supply of bags, then remove the mutt mitt dispensers and discontinue the program. Other villages and municipalities have found similar problems.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Further discussion, I know this, I mean, everybody has plastic bags, so please use them, bring them with you when you're taking your dogs on walks in our parks. You know, it's been an issue, and like I said, there's some people, they don't bring a bag, and there's no bags there, so then, you know, then we have sanitary issues that way. So, please, if you own pets, please bring your own mutt mitts and/or plastic bags in order to pick up the deposits by your pets. Thank you for that. Colleen, anything else?
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion on that? Okay, and that's not really the spending, so all in favor of the...
Aye.
Aye.
Motion?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Thank you.
Yep, we have a couple more. But as you know, the St. Croix River is a beautiful and popular river, and the St. Croix River Fest has many activities throughout the week of July 17th, or July 12th through 17th, 2014, to promote the river. Events can be found on their website at www.stcroixriverfest.org. You may recall, like in the, down in Lakefront Park by the Pips, they have the big scrappy fish that's, you know, decorated and made from all the junk that's cleaned up from the river. So, one of the events is to clean up along the St. Croix River, and so we'd like North Hudson to participate in that this year. So, move to recommend North Hudson's participation in the cleanup effort with River Fest Cleanup Day on Tuesday, July 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, to include Brown's Beach and Ferry Landing Beach. And you can just show up and help.
The seconded by Mark, thank you. Just, it's, and it's, the only place they're concentrating on is Ferry Landing and Brown's Beach?
That's the village property.
Yeah, well, I was, I was, well, I mean, the part, you know, that I would, you know, recommend for another year perhaps. No, 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 no. I'm not on the St. Croix River, first of all. But, you know, I mean, we are also property, at least we pay rent on areas around the dams. And as a fisherman, it's ridiculous the amount of garbage that's left around those blinks. So, so maybe in the future, next year, we can maybe get to put those on the list, because that is Hudson, North Hudson.
Even add it this year. I mean, we can add it this year.
Yeah, that would be fine. No, we can do that, because...
If the beach is there, they could definitely get to that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I mean, I, I pick up bags of garbage every time I don't, every time I go down the river. I mean, it's, you know, I wish I caught as many, you know, I mean, a limit of fish, you know, rather than a limit of garbage, but I mean, it's, you know, I wish, I wish people would pick up after themselves. But I will be participating in that. Do you need tools? I mean, you know, are they gonna...
They'll have some, but if you've got tools, it wouldn't hurt. Your own gloves and...
Gloves, boots.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know with the adopt the highway, a lot of times the county or the state and stuff gives you the stuff you need.
All kinds of them down along the beach. And, well, probably have more information during the July meeting.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Good point.
That's a very good point. Okay. And the last thing, Colleen? Oh, we got a request, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And the last item, as you know, Wally Gregerson was a well-respected member of the North Hudson community. He was a village president from 1977 to 1991, and a longtime supporter and volunteer for Pepperfest. His wife Bernie and his family would like to honor him with a bench in Pepperfest Park. So the Park Board is recommending to move to install a memorial bench in Pepperfest Park to honor Wally Gregerson, to be paid for with money from his memorial fund, and to be installed by North Hudson Public Works Department.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Further discussion?
No brainer.
Have you got a spot picked out?
I'm sitting right next to the sign.
Okay, beautiful, thank you. All in favor of a motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So, hey, Stan?
Ted?
Just as a reminder, because it kind of follows with Park Board, I think it's the St. Croix County Cleanup this weekend. So if you have batteries, appliances, they'll charge you. But for North Hudson, it's over at the...
Oh, the old dump site, or Ball Field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, let's see, we're down to the deal that the Board may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent, small g, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village of North Hudson, who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to come involved in regarding the property at 712 Pine Street North. And the motion to go into closed session.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul's fine, yeah.
Roll call.
Roll call. Paul?
Yes.
Yes.